Okay, hi everyone and welcome all to the Culver City Democratic Club's candidate forum for Culver City Unified School Board. Thank you to the two candidates who could make it today. We have Samin Ahmadiya and Andrew Lackman with us tonight. And for thank you also for the club members who are watching from home. My name is Hannah Bolis. I am an education reporter with Westside Voice. We cover politics, arts and culture and education for the West Side and we're really proud to have a lot of Culver City readers. So thanks for having me. You can read and support our work at westsidevoiceLA.com. Okay, so all of the school board candidates who are registered Democrats were invited tonight. Just based on who was available. This was the date that was chosen and we chose this date because on Wednesday, the club will meet to discuss the candidates in the forum and vote to endorse two of all of the candidates. And the club's endorsement results will be announced on Friday at the latest. Okay, so here's how the forum is going to work tonight. We are going to have a couple of different sections. The first one is introductory section where each candidate will have two minutes to talk about themselves, their platform. And then we'll move to an eight question section where each candidate will have two minutes. And then we'll go to a quick round of three questions, one minute each. And then we'll end with a closing statement from each of you, two minutes each. And these questions were written by a committee of club members and neither of the candidates got to look at them before today. Okay, so we're gonna have the timer running. It will tell you when you have thirty seconds left. I think there will be some sort of beep. And we'll also be posting the questions in the chat just for reference. Okay, does that sound good? Great, let's have our introductions then. Samin, why don't you start?
Yeah, it says that only the host can unmute, so I apologize for that. But so, good evening, everyone. I'm really honored to be here tonight. My name is Samina Ahmadiya and I'm an immigrant advocate and a proud parent of two young children. In my role as an immigration attorney, I'm deeply committed to fighting for equity and justice every day. And as a candidate, I'm dedicated to enhancing access, wellness and achievement for all of our students. So my access platform includes full inclusion for students with disabilities, equitable modernization of our facilities utilizing the funds from Measure E up to bring our schools up to the highest standards. For wellness, I'd like to focus on creating a comprehensive TK through twelve mental health curriculum and enhancing wraparound mental health services and really providing holistic support for the students and families. And in terms of achievement, I'd really like to develop outdoor learning spaces, offering environments that support academic, social and emotional growth and also increasing our resources for our multilingual learners. So my goal is really to shift our focus back to our students and the resources that they really urgently need in this post pandemic era. And my family chose La Bayona for its Spanish immersion program specifically. And during the year, I volunteered my expertise as an immigration attorney to help these families navigating the system. As an attorney, I'm often debunking misconceptions and providing clarity about the immigration system, rights and responsibilities. And when La Bayona first learned that they were losing their vice principal that was a Spanish speaker, that I thought that this was a great oversight, especially for our Spanish speaking families. And along with a group of dedicated parent organizers, I am teachers. I met with our superintendent and advocated the importance of accurate translations and cultural understanding. And our efforts ultimately led to the decision to keep the Spanish speaking vice principal. This experience really highlighted the systemic barriers that exist across our district and motivated me to want to advocate on a broader scale. So I'm running for this position really to address these issues and to work towards a system where every student and staff member in CCUSD can thrive. So thank you so much for this opportunity and I really look forward to connecting with you all and getting to know all of you better for the betterment of our schools.
Thank you, Samin. I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm having trouble with the timer.
Yeah, I didn't see the timer.
Let me see if I can get that fixed up. I'm really sorry.
Yeah, you hit two minutes almost perfectly though. So you're a consummate professional. Okay. Are we, should we keep going or?
Give me a minute to see if I can get this thing to work.
I could use my phone or you could use your phone.
We can edit this out later. Let's see. Okay, so Andrew, you will be the test subject for the other Zoom timer app. It should appear in the upper right of your screen. Thanks. But please go ahead. Sorry to.
I don't need the timer there, but I'll do my best. Hi, everyone. Many of you know me. I've been a lifetime member of the club and been there for many years. My name is Andrew Lackman. I am a parent of a sixth grader. We just finished up at El Marino Elementary School, although we originally started in TK at Elrin Cone. Finished the Spanish language program. As many of you know, my wife is first generation American and Guatemalan. And so making sure that our daughter retained her Spanish language skills was very important to us. Of course, she'll only talk Spanish to her abuelas. She won't talk that to us, but that's the joy of being parents, I suppose. I am, in addition to that, I am also a lawyer. I am a ethics lawyer. I also deal with a lot of business ethics transactions. I ran my own business for a number of years, working in the technology sector. Prior to that, I was legislative director for Congressman Ted Lieu and consultant for the Joint Committee on the Arts for the state legislature. So I have a policy as well as a legal background. I have served on a number of the committees, including the LCAP PAC, which focuses funding on the students most in need from an equity perspective, particularly unhoused foster children, English learners, and Black Student Plan that we put forward under Tristan Isadora's leadership. And I served also, serve also on the Equity Advisory Committee. Why am I running for school board? It's not just merely because I am Jewish and I love suffering. It's also because I believe that we have allowed too much, had too much focus over fighting on the personalities. And we're here all for the students. We want to make sure that we're following evidence-based practices, that we're spending the bond money in our school classrooms. And also, and I will close with this, making sure that we're supporting every student, no matter how they learn or what their background, and continue to move forward with good equity-based plans as well as we've built so far.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's get to the questions. Our first question is, "In most school districts, the loudest voices are often those with the most time, education, money and social status. What will you do to make sure that students whose parents face greater obstacles advocating on behalf of their kids can get a fair share of the resources? Which communities do you believe are not currently being represented in district and school decisions?" And Andrew, I'll let you go first.
Well, thank you. Well, having served on the LCAP Committee, I got a very good idea of our most at-risk populations and those who have needed our help. I think, again, we have a Black Student Plan, which has been a great thing. And I think something that we should copy it for other populations, especially our English learner populations, which is the ones that have been left most behind. They are still have not seen their scores increase during the pandemic, while people like my wife were able to sit at home with my daughter and make sure that she was paying attention. When you were in the service industry, this just wasn't possible. And we need to expand on some of the programs that we have. We use our adult school and we also have other programs through the Parental Institute for Quality Education, which work with the parents to make sure that they learn how to advocate. I know my wife's experience at Inglewood High School, her parents coming, were being college dropouts, fleeing political violence in Guatemala, they knew to fight for, how to fight for their kids. But there are, there are a number of barriers that get in the way, whether it's cultural barriers, economic barriers, and making sure that our English learner populations are are better represented. I would also say that we don't pay enough attention to our advisory committees, especially as we're talking about full inclusion, which is something that I support as well for disabilities, students who are neurodivergent or have disabilities, including my own daughter's experience. Are we out of time? I can't see the thing up there.
You have thirty seconds.
I have thirty seconds, okay. But that's another population, another group that we need to work with and involve more and see more involvement on our committees. We had one English learning family, I believe it was in our LCAP group and their input was invaluable. And you know, Paula was a very good voice there as well. But we need to do more with that to help with our Black and Brown students, those who are working and who don't have the time to be able to do that. I'd also like to put together an equity fund to help out in our poor, our schools that don't have strong booster.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, Samin?
Thank you. So yeah, I think that there are very loud voices at CCUSD and it's incumbent upon us as board members to really know which groups, and we have a lot of that data, right? Like which groups are most at, are at promise groups? Are students with disabilities? Are Black students? Are Brown students? Are multilingual learners? And I don't think each group, I don't think there's one size fits all for how we can be more inclusive of these groups. Are LGBTQ plus students? First, we need to anticipate this, right? Like, right now, we're heading into an election where as an immigration attorney, I'm really anticipating a lot of negative and xenophobic rhetoric towards the immigrant community. So thinking about the ways that we can support our multilingual learner families and really make them feel as though they're part of the community. When we had that initiative to keep the vice principal at La Bayona, something that I heard over and over again was that these families didn't feel, they felt that they weren't fully included in our district. So thinking about ways in which we can build those relationships, really get out there and build those relationships, make sure that all of our messaging is available in Spanish as well. Second, for some of these groups, what's really important and for all is enhancing our mental health support. So I would really work with the board to ensure that these wraparound mental health services are provided using the NTSS framework. So first, looking at our tier one supports, do our teachers have the sufficient? Are they sufficiently prepared to address these mental health needs that we're anticipating, right? And then the tier two and tier three supports, this, we don't even need to anticipate. And recently, there was, the Culver City High School students indicated at a forty-two percent rate that they were feeling sadness and hopelessness. So how can we address that? How can we make sure that we're, when we're finding these students that have been identified as needing mental health support, that we have that sufficient infrastructure for them? And it's really about thinking about the intersectionality of these things. Okay, thank you.
I hate to do it.
No, I wish I could see it, but.
That is gonna be a problem. Let's, let's see if we can figure something out. Can I put it on my video, Jeff? Okay. At least then it'll be a little bit bigger for both of you. Okay, let me do this really quick.
I even have my reading glasses on here, so I can try to see.
And we had a whole technical rehearsal and thought we had everything ironed out. Sorry. But I can continue to hold up my phone. I plugged it back in.
Okay, I have little weeds.
Well, now we see that, but I don't know if the people can see us three.
Yeah, okay, let me not do that then. Okay, I'd like to, I'm just gonna try it. So we actually have a, okay, cool. All right, back to business. Here is question number two. "Give an example of an issue or need experienced by students in Culver City and explain how you view this through an equity lens." Samin?
Yeah, so one of the issues that is really near and dear to me is the inclusion of students with disabilities. So ensuring that there's full and genuine inclusion of students. And that's really, and with that, it's essential for fostering our equitable access and promoting achievement across our schools, right? So first, I would look to modernizing our facilities for full accessibility. And the reason why I thought of this is because at La Bayona, we have, we have issues with our ramps, we have issues with our curbs being too high. There have been issues with elevators where parents aren't able to get in and attend parent-teacher conferences. So upgraded infrastructure is really important. But we shouldn't only be thinking about ADA compliance. We also need to think about comfort and functionality. So it's just, it's not mere accessibility. We need to make conducive learning spaces for everyone to thrive if we're really thinking about full inclusion. Also for these students, I would think about enhancing the social and instructional inclusion. So teacher and staff training is really important here and we really need buy-in from the teachers on this point. Not only do they need training, but they also need, the teachers need enough time to meaningfully incorporate their training into their curriculum so that we can really have a path towards achievement, right? And developing inclusion plans is part of this. So each of our seven school sites should develop and implement detailed inclusion plans so that we're ensuring that our students with disabilities are integrated into general education classes and that their diverse needs are really met. Lastly, for this specific group, I would create dedicated rules for the family and student support. And with all of these together, we can enhance access and inclusiveness. It worked though. The timer was good.
What a noise it made.
And it sounded like it was the Academy Awards.
Okay, Andrew?
Thank you. Well, I think there are two examples I'd like to use. One is, a number of our schools have very strong booster clubs. And these are amazing things, but there are some schools, our Title I schools, La Bayona, for instance, yes, they do get some Title I funding, but I would like to work with the Culver Education Foundation to put together an equity fund, which can be funded through third-party sources, foundations, to help make up the differences, to improve the quality in the school for air things that are not covered by Title I and these other areas. So that would be something, that would be a great way for us to lift up our students and provide more resources for some of our most underserved and at-risk populations. Secondly, and I think we were talking a little bit about the disabilities issue here. As a parent of a child with learning disabilities, I have seen how things work and don't work and where the challenges have been. And as someone who also really fully supports inclusion, it's a matter of not only providing the training, but the resources that everyone needs in order to make this work. We spend three million dollars, I think it is, on litigation around, particularly in this area. If we were to take even a portion of that and put that into the resources to continue to train teachers for how to deal with the situations, but also to provide the resources and the aids needed in order to make sure that inclusion can be fully funded in all ways, that would make a huge difference. And this is an example of how we can do things through the resources we have. Also with that, in terms of providing support, we've got sensory rooms and a number of schools love to increase that, find ways of continuing to increase access to that for neurodivergent students. Anti-bullying training has got to be very important, making sure our students feel safe. And then finally here, what I would like to see is with broader support throughout our community, so that we're bringing together teachers, our advisory committees to make sure that everyone is being listened to when we're following evidence-based practices to include all of our students. I've seen with my daughter's own experience, how some of that has fallen short.
Next question. "Many of California's public school teachers and staff cannot afford to live in communities where they work, forcing them to commute long distances or leave the profession. What are your views on utilizing land owned by educational agencies to build housing that could become subsidized housing for public agency staff and/or to generate revenue that the district could spend on raises or to give new teachers retention bonuses for housing?" Andrew?
I think a lot of this depends on our relationship and what our classified employees and our teachers want. That being said, I chair the Finance Advisory Committee. We've been doing a number of hearings on affordable housing and workforce housing is a part of that. We are a real estate poor district and so there are challenges where, for us to provide it. But if we can work in partnership with our teachers and, you know, and our classified employees and with some of our partners in the community that have that real estate that can contribute, we can find these alternatives. And I love the idea, again, if this is something that the teachers want of those retention bonuses, I love the idea of, you know, working within our staff to have someone who can help our employees find affordable housing closer by, as several other schools do. And the third thing is working with the other jurisdictions, working with Culver City, working with, and working with the LA Community College District, which has a lot of real estate. We're right here next to West LA College. They're planning on building housing and they have the space to be able to do it. There are ways for us to be able to address this without, you know, in a way, in partnership with our teachers, in partnership with our community and in partnership with the resources that we can put in place in order to make sure that if this is something that everyone wants, that we can put in place. I know I had time left.
Okay, yeah, I would be very interested in exploring workforce housing. I think it's very science-based and this type of housing has shown to help critical workers like teachers and classified employees who are, quite frankly, not only priced out of Culver City, but Los Angeles County and in many cases. And another benefit is attracting diverse staff and retaining our staff, right? I think it's important to think about the context when we think about why we're talking about workforce housing and why that matters. I really think it does allow, it does support our essential workers. It also leads to community stability, right? If we have these teachers and staff that are living and working in, they're living in the community that they serve, they feel more connected to the community that they're serving and the children that they're serving. And there are economic benefits. So it reduces employee turnover and supports our local economy. I do think there are a number of challenges that we should address and one of these is cost and funding, right? Developing workforce housing is expensive. And another challenge is who has access to this housing? And ensuring that our teachers and our classified employees have access and aren't necessarily priced out. So ultimately, I would support efforts to create workforce housing, particularly because I think it promotes mixed income communities and supports diverse neighborhoods. And I really think the board should work toward the creation of this workforce housing. I know that a lot of good work has been done on it and it would really be a shame if we weren't to continue that. But I do think it needs to be done in tandem with our staff and our teachers and our classified workers. And by retaining a diverse staff, we're then able to have our children achieve.
Great, thank you. "What are the three most important policies the board should adopt or has adopted to provide clear guidance to the superintendent to improve safety in our schools?" And Samin, do you like to start?
Yeah, absolutely. So student safety is crucial and critical to fostering an environment that supports learning and engagement and allows our students to achieve, right? And to address this, I'm really, I'm really committed to a comprehensive approach. And that includes not only supporting gun safety reform, but also emphasizes a holistic mental wellness and practical preparedness approach. And when we're talking about enhancing mental wellness, and I think we've talked, I talked about this and I touched on this, but that would really be guided under the NTSS framework. For our tier one supports, we're going to want increased training for our teachers and staff to address the mental health needs of our students, right? Particularly in this post pandemic environment. Our tier two and tier three supports really will include evaluating and expanding our current support system. So what do we have in place and ensuring that these students with the more intensive needs receive the appropriate intervention from qualified mental health professionals? Second, I would look to expanding after-school care programs and with a particular focus on those, on those who need the additional support. These programs really play a crucial role in providing a safe and structured environment. And then third, strengthening our emergency preparedness, right? Partnering with the board to ensure that CCUSD, each school site has clear, actionable plans in place for emergencies. So that includes regular testing and updating of our facilities, so our school speaker systems, looking to our alternative communication methods, making sure they're consistently tested. So by integrating these strategies, we can work to create a safer and more supportive learning environment that not only protects our students, but also promotes their overall wellness and achievement.
Well, thank you. Safety has become quite an issue. At El Marino, we've had two separate incidences where students, where people have broken in, one during school hours. And if it wasn't for our amazing classified employees who intercepted them and they were picked up on outstanding warrants not related to the school district a couple of blocks away. But I think, you know, making sure that we find a way as part of the use of our bond money to upgrade and to our security and build on the security plans that have already been passed at all of our sites. And it was mentioned about testing them. I think that's a wonderful idea, something we should do quite, we should continue to do. But to put in things like scale-proof fences and making sure that we've got appropriate security around so that we're, that we can respond without having to have police around. You know, the police have made clear that they don't want to, you know, be on our campuses and they'd rather work in cooperation with our on-campus security that we have. Mental health is a very important thing and making sure that we're dealing, we're providing support. I think what we need is full-time counselors that are employees. You know, when you outsource things like this, you have people who leave because they find better jobs, they get better certifications. And in order to build long-term relationships between the students and the counselors, it's really important, frankly, to have that steadiness of presence there as well. And then the third part, is, you know, the after-school programs are not only a great idea in terms of making sure that we have all income levels have access to this, but it also can mean more money for us in terms of being, for daily attendance. So there's two benefits that we get as, you know, the social benefit as well as the financial benefit. And I'd like to thank the Academy again.
Great, thank you both. Okay. "Do you support a Green New Deal for our schools? If so, what are the most critical policy changes we should make under a Green New Deal for Culver City Unified?" And I'm throwing it back to you, Andrew.
Thank you. Well, there's a couple of things I think we can do. We can, we can continue to expand our sustainability practices on campus. You know, making sure that the materials we use are renewable, compostable and don't add to our carbon footprint, expanding our solar on campuses. The bond provides some great opportunities for us to look at sustainability and renew. Uh the bond prevent provided some great opportunities uh for us to look at sustainability and renew uh and when we build out in our practices. And I do think that with our existing resources, um we can. You we can find a way of orienting our administrative staff so that we have somebody focused on. On sustainability so that we can uh do that. And the third thing, which I think is very important here is. Uh it is uh getting to and from the school, uh making it easier to bike and walk and provide safe transit. Uh for our students has got to be very important. I I've talked with a number of neighbors, particularly around the high school and the middle school. Uh and as well as bicycle advocates about the idea of uh of changing uh accessibility in that area in a way. Which uh would encourage safer biking uh and more bike uh and better use, safer use of bike paths. Uh it's so people can uh so students can get to school and I was the only person who showed up. Uh in support of and and testified in the uh on behalf of making sure that we get tap cards for our students so that they can use public transit. For free. Important from an equity standpoint as well, but a a great uh way to reduce our carbon footprint, uh which we haven't yet. Fully delved into. I have also uh you know, reached out and worked with a number of folks on our sustainability committee. Uh they've got some great recommendations and I will make a point of continuing to meet and work with them to get ideas. To see how we can continue to improve and implement uh Green New Deal policies within our school system to improve energy efficiency.
It felt like it went on for a little bit longer that time. Uh thank you very much. Um Samin.
Uh thank you. So improving sustainability and energy efficiency is really vital for our schools. Um it's imperative. So I fully support the Green New Deal recommendations and would advocate for a comprehensive sustainability plan to guide our efforts. So to maximize the impact of measure E funding, I really think we should consider a sustainability coordinator to oversee these initiatives. And just making sure that we're meeting our environmental goals. Um this person could also support grant writing opportunities. There's a big push in California for school greening and so there are grants available and a a group of parents at La Viona. Um a husband and wife, uh David and Tala, they both uh took it upon themselves to work with our nonprofit. And and write this grant through the Cal Fire Program. It's really important that that takes a lot of time and we really should be utilizing those efforts. Um education is also critical. So we have to integrate climate change topics into our curriculum. And equip the teachers with the resources they need to push that forward. Um I also support turning the entire CCUSD campus into solar generating land, solar power generating land. Um this has already partially been accomplished at Farragut and the middle school. Um but it can be expanded significantly on all of our properties and it would save the district money. Um in the coming decades and would serve as an educational tool. Um I believe in campus transformation, so I should focus on reducing the asphalt and increasing great green spaces with the available grants. Um and also we need a district wide shift to eliminate single use foodware. And we should really follow that at the ci- city level. At the city level, restaurants are prohibited from using disposable food service ware. And and it would be a great model to our students to to continue doing that in our schools. Lastly, I'm really inspired by the high school students and we should aim to for that eighty percent of students to use the non car transportation. So expanding those efforts where we can.
Thank you. Um our next question is a detracking question. Culver City's secondary schools have detract English language arts classes renaming so called honors and non honors. To more accurately reflect the college preparatory curriculum taught in both classes. The goal was to increase access to AP and other college level courses. Did you support or oppose this policy? Will you support similar policy that is being recommended by the California Department of Education for math? Why or why not? Samin?
Thank you. Um yeah, so detracking and again, I think context is important. So placing these instead of placing students in different tracks. Um based on perceived ability, it's really mixing these students of various abilities and skill levels in the same classroom. And there are a number of benefits for this and research findings support this, right? So it optimizes equity and access. Um it also promotes social integration. So having these mixed ability classrooms is really important. Students can benefit from this collaborative environment with diverse perspectives. And again, the research findings really do sustain the fact that detracking can lead to improved. Um outcomes for all students and college preparedness, right? Um I do think there are a number of challenges that we should consider. Um I don't think we should just, you know, jump into it. So teacher preparedness is one thing. So teachers need additional support and professional development to effectively differentiate. To instruction in a detract classroom. So this includes strategies for managing. A wide range of abilities and ensuring that all students are challenged and engaged and can achieve. Um and 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 there's a community perspective here as well. I know there's parent concerns. Um I come from an immigrant background where my parents always said, you know, take every honors class, do this and you'll succeed. Um so I do think it's really important that we're working with the community and providing the information, not really the messaging, but the information that they need. Um to understand decisions that the board and the district are making. Um and and so ultimately, I would really advocate for detracking as a means to promote both equity and excellence is our. In our education and allow our children to really achieve.
Andrew?
Thank you. Um I I believe in evidence based outcomes uh in in education and looking at how things have worked. When we did the um the honors English program, the idea was we wanted more students to sign up for AP. Uh for AP programs. Uh and part of that was a a plan uh like that was what was done in New Rochelle, New York. Which is one of the few places where the detracking program worked in its in in it fully, where they made classes smaller. They provided more resources for at risk populations. Un- unfortunately, the way we implemented it this time is we went straight to getting rid of the program, but we didn't do any of the follow through. In order to make sure that this works. So we need to make sure that we've got metrics in place and accountability to make sure that if when we do take these steps. And want to try experimentation, that we have the accountability and the metrics of where we want to go and making sure how this works. I also believe there are times and cases where students who are uh who want to be challenged should be challenged. And so it it's a balance in that way of making sure that we're providing the resources and and helping lift up the students. Who need the re- you know, who who have fi- face uh barrier uh uh who historic barriers and systemic barriers and addressing those and finding out. But at the same time, a- as an example, they're proposing getting rid of middle school algebra. And every high school, every every school district has the option. I I don't think we should get rid of middle school algebra. Um. I think it's an important thing. We we need to put the resources in to make sure that every student has the chance to thrive. Uh but I I do think that, you know, if you do want to try to do these, you know, these kinds of things and 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 find ways to. To make sure that you can have a multi dimensional classroom with parent kids of different abilities. You have to provide the teachers with what you promised in order to make it work. Otherwise, whatever the our our we want to do is not, is going to be doomed to failure. And that's not anything any of us want to do. You know, we want to see every kid. And that means follow through, keeping our promises to our teachers, our parent, uh our classrooms and our parents and involving.
Thank you. So you both touched on this next question a little bit because it does have a lot to do with safety at school. Um but maybe there's an opportunity to dig in a little deeper here. Um what is being done to ensure that the mental health needs of our students are being adequately addressed by the district and how could this be improved? And Andrew, you'll start us off.
Well, I think um you know, making sure we're following the standards of what Samin suggested is very important. I appreciate, you know, us advancing that discussion of making sure that we have our count, we have enough counselors and those counselors. Have the credentials and that they're employees of a long term relationship within the district. Uh I also think it's important to uh you know, keep in mind uh the the various forms of trauma and. Uh and experiences that some of our most at risk students have. Uh I know I don't have the perfect lingo on it, forgive me, but I think the idea i- is there of making sure that. We have the resources for those students and that we're there to provide uh and even the playing field for for them to make sure that. Uh those who have to have to deal with, I believe the term is uh trauma informed care. Uh that that that's there and we're providing it for those students who go through those risks. I especially have concern over uh mental health uh with bullying. Uh and you know, think we need to discuss about some of the role of social media in our schools. Uh you know, LA USD is certainly is currently going through the discussion uh about uh how and when we use. Allow cell phone you cellphone use in our schools. I think we certainly need to have that discussion about that impact and how we can. Uh we can support our kids and make sure they feel safe, but also making sure that in implementing restorative justice and making sure that. Uh that systemic barriers and systemic discrimination does not uh you know, d- does not uh make our uh kids. Uh put, you know, presume presume that they're all going to, that certain kids are players are, you know, are 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 good or bad or however you want to use it. Uh is important, but also making sure that we have accountability and making sure, and this is really important, that our kids who are bullied are protected. I have seen over and over again, the system fails those uh those kinds of kids and we need to make sure. Uh that we are there for them and that we can support that. We'll stay them protected here.
Samin?
Yeah, um I I've touched on these points and I want to talk about why it's so important to me, the mental health aspect. And it was uh the statistic that I heard about forty two percent of our high school students feeling. Hopelessness and sadness really fueled my fire in terms of wanting to run for school board. Um I I think there are a number of factors. I think Andrew, you talk, you touched on social media and that's certainly a big factor. Also, we're living in this post pandemic world and and we really need to think about that. Um so when we're thinking about forty two percent of our students feeling hopelessness or sadness, it really makes it a critical issue for me. Um and again, I I won't go through it, but but thinking about our counselor to student ratio. Um and also thinking about what services we have in place for for. Um these students that have really shown to need them, right? These students who are are reaching, who are known to us in the school district. Um at a younger age, I I don't think I touched on this fully, but inclusive and developmentally appropriate curriculum is really important. So we should be trying to promote inclusion and supporting mental health from a really young age, from transitional kindergarten. Um this includes highlighting diversity, so incorporating lessons that really celebrate diverse backgrounds and experiences. And fostering this inclusive environment where we, every student meaningfully feels represented. And also focusing on social, social and emotional development. So integrating that social and emotional learning. To build resilience and empathy and self awareness and laying the foundation. Um for both personal well being and academic success and achievement.
Okay. Thank you both. Um this is the last question of this long round. Um and here goes. Students as young as elementary and middle school are subjected to verbal and physical harassment based on their gender identity and gender expression. What specific policies do you recommend to address this and at what age would you suggest a curriculum or programming be introduced? Samin?
Yes, um all these questions are so interconnected. So really just my um mental health. Platform that I'm on right now, which is wonderful, but um and I'm so glad that we're talking about this so extensively because it's really important. So supporting and embracing these historically excluded excluded students. Um including our LGBTQ plus individuals is really essential. Um in fostering an inclusive and equitable educational environment. So to advance student wellness and achievement, we really need to take comprehensive steps. I've talked about the MTSS framework. I won't put you through it again, but I agree with Andrew in strengthening our bullying prevention and intervention plan. So um recognizing that these students are um face higher risk of bullying. And so we really need to review and enhance our bullying intervention strategies. Um and this includes early education for me. So introducing and improving our social and emotional learning from TK classrooms. We really need to be fostering full empathy, respect and understanding from a young age. So that as our kids grow older, it's almost unremarkable. Like we already, you know, um. We know that there are, there's fluidity, right? Um and supporting our LGBTQ student groups is also really important. I think student groups are so important. Um ensuring that they have the resources, they feel supported. Um and this really includes giving them some visibility as well. So ensuring that they have the dedicated support services. And that they feel seen and valued within the community and integrating the LGBTQ plus history. And contributions from a very early age. So just teaching our students and promoting a more inclusive educational environment. That supports their achievement and acknowledges these diverse perspectives.
Yeah, I must add it. Okay, um Andrew?
Uh first of all, I I want to thank Samin for bringing up in the last question, you know, it it you know, celebrating diversity. Uh social emotional learning is very important and it's very important in this too. I think of, you know, my own daughter's experience. Uh the questions that she asks and asks us as parents and we're lucky that we can have those conversations. Not all parents can have those conversations. There's uh various, you know, cu- cultural backgrounds that are different and and things like that. And so, you know, Governor Newsom signed a. A bill recently that protects the privacy of students. I think that's important, especially in those situations where some of these students can literally be in danger. I was a member of Stonewall. And you know, we heard stories, uh you know, I am a member of Stonewall, I'm a lifetime member. Uh but you know, stories of of kids who are kicked out of their house because uh of their, you know, you know, because of gender identity or sexual orientation. And so we need to protect those students and make sure that they are safe and feel that uh that uh you know, that 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 they're. That that school is a place where uh they can express themselves and uh and find their identities and learn about themselves. Similarly, uh I do want to talk a little bit about uh not gender identity. We should also talk about how our 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 young women students. And our our girls are, you know, are are are, you know, are are treated. Um we need to invest more in STEM and make sure there's more access to science. There are so many socioeconomic pressures to push. Uh girls out of science and we need to fight that. Uh and that's a a very, uh my we own, we experienced this myself when my daughter was at camp. And uh they didn't want her to take a video game design camp. They wanted to push her into another course because there were more girls in that, in that particular class. And I'm very proud that she stood her own in in wanting to continue to take that class. But it really kind of made me think about Title Nine and how we're supporting our students and making sure that we're encouraging. Uh young women to get into the sciences uh and not just girls. A lot of that comes from, doesn't come from ability. It comes from the pressure that we in society put on.
Thank you. And yeah, I think it goes without saying that. That girls and women are included when we're talking about gender identity. Um so I appreciate that. And that's it for our long answers. Um we made it. How are we feeling? Um and we're going to move on to our our three short answers. You'll each have a minute. For each of these questions and the first one, you both have have spoken about measure E. But we'll get back into it. And the question is, did you publicly endorse or oppose measure E, School Facilities Bond, which passed in March twenty twenty four? And what specific things did you do to help support or oppose this measure? And Andrew, you can get started.
Um so I sat on the bond feasibility committee. I worked with the teachers to improve communication to make sure that the conversations. Uh need that needed to be had to make sure that we were getting the input uh went through uh and 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 went through that process. And then uh also, uh I also um. Uh so not only did I support measure E, I walked precincts for measure E. Uh just signing a letter is not enough. Uh and I know everyone is is busy, but our students, we needed this money. We we have schools that were built in the fifties. Uh and our 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 infrastructure has fallen into pretty severe disrepair. So um I walked through most of Lindbergh Park, my own complex. Uh you know, did whatever I could to work with the yes on E. I'm actually endorsed by Mila Maraga, who is one of the chairs of the yes on E. On E campaign and I I I hope at least a little bit of that is the reflection of the fact that um. not only do I, you know, stand, I stand in support of measure E, I I walk the walk. To make sure this.
Thank you. And Samin?
Yeah, um, admittedly, I'm newer to Culver City politics. Um, so unfortunately, no one was looking to me for measure E support, although I do think it's very important to be walking it out in the, um, canvassing. Um, but I I want to make it very clear that I fully support funding public education, including modernizing our schools with revenue from measure E. And as a homeowner and a taxpayer in the district, I'm happy to contribute, knowing that our students' opportunity to achieve is directly related to the modernization of our facilities. And I think the work on measure E is not done, so it's not too late for me to get involved. I think we can continue our efforts. Um, I think it's really important that we get the word out about what we're doing with, um, measure E funding. And and that would be a big push for me. How can we show the community where their taxpaying dollars are going and and make that really abundantly clear for them for future endeavors?
Thank you. Um, okay, uh, what other candidates are you endorsing locally in this election cycle for school board and city council? Samin?
So for for city council, I have met with and really am excited about and fully support Baba for city council. His integrity, kindness and vision for Culver City really align with our shared values of inclusion and justice. And though I haven't met Yasmin or Nancy, I support their candidacies as well. Trusting that the values of CCDC align with mine and I trust their endorsement and and their commitment to diversity and equity is reflective of what we collectively champion, right? And that's social justice, community engagement and progressive leadership. And so those would be the three that I support.
Hey, Andrew?
Um, so I've had the pleasure of, uh, I served on the finance advisory committee with Nancy Barba and, uh, was, she was a wonderful colleague to work with. Uh, I appreciate that and I appreciate that Yasmin asks a lot of very tough questions in city council that need to be asked uh, at times. Uh, I, as a candidate and as someone who has really tried to build bridges and tried to work in terms of addressing these gaps and the fact that so much of the civility has left our public discourse. Uh, I have not at this time endorsed any candidates, um, for any of of the offices. But I I I appreciate, and I feel it's important to build, um, relationships that particular way. But a- as I said before, there are these folks here who have done really amazing work, uh, and and I appreciate those. And I I think, you know, uh, you know, similarly, I I can appreciate, you know, Janine's work on with respect to her, you know, with respect to, with respect to the Arts Commission, sorry, the but, you know, what I wanted to do is try to build bridges between, uh, between these communities and bring back civility so that we can talk about the students and not who likes who. That's been part of the problem in terms of the challenges that we've seen on our school board.
Okay. Here's our final question. Do you support vote sixteen, which would allow high school age students, sixteen and seventeen year olds to vote in the Culver City School Board and City Council elections? Why or why not? Andrew?
Um, so actually, this is an area of some expertise that I've dealt with. So, uh, there was a measure on the ballot, uh, a number of years ago, which would have lowered the voting age for the primary to seventeen. Uh, and I do think that seven, you know, that young people should be, uh, in included. I think there are some issues that we need to, uh, address in this with respect to making sure that students, uh, who get involved like this, uh, in fact, are are not, uh, you know, are are able to make decisions on their own and not be influenced. I wouldn't say by their parents, because anyone who has a teenager, try telling your seventeen, sixteen year old what to do or how to vote. That's not going to happen. But we also need to work with our teachers and make sure that we've got guidelines to make sure this is safe. There's a case out of, uh, that that came out of the Supreme Court, uh, up north called Baker, uh, Spear v. Baker from eighteen ninety-eight, which is what's been holding all of this back. And I think, uh, getting this resolved so that we can make this decision, um, is going to be important as a part of this discussion as well, uh, to figure out what works.
Um, Samin?
I wholeheartedly support vote sixteen. So in my conversations with Culver City students, their intelligence, their thoughtfulness and engagement are really evident to me. I firmly believe that empowering our youth is essential to advancing a more just society and I often look to younger generations to see where justice is moving towards. So vote sixteen for me really embodies this perfectly. Um, so for these and for these reasons, I I would fully support vote sixteen.
All right, um, that's it for the questions. And now we're just going to have our closing statements. So, um, and you'll get two minutes each for that. All right, Samin, are you ready? All right, let's go.
Yeah, okay. Um, so as I stand here, not standing, I'm sitting here before you tonight, my unwavering commitment to our children, educators and, uh, community reflects a profound dedication to ensuring that each of our students in our district has the access, wellness and support they need to achieve their fullest potential. My journey as an immigrant advocate and a parent within the CCUSD school district has really highlighted the critical importance of equitable access to educational resources, fostering a safe and supportive environment for mental wellness and also celebrating the rich diversity within our student body. Whether it's through enhancing school safety with comprehensive mental health services, creating truly inclusive educational spe- spaces or implementing sustainable practices. My, my goal is really to build a district that where every student can thrive and achieve. So I'm deeply committed to addressing these linguistic and cultural and economic barriers and to our collaborat- collaborat- collaboratively with you, but also with our community members to ensure that every student feels valued. Every educator is supported and every family is actively engaged. So our shared mission is really to create a district that prioritizes the well-being and achievement of all of our students. And I really thank you for the time and for your trust and I'm eager to serve our community with my dedication and compassion. Thank you so much. I'm really honored to be here tonight.
Thank you. Um, Andrew?
Thank you. Um, you know, many of you know, I have a long career here, a career having worked to promote equity and to make sure that voices that are not heard are heard. Uh, as a member of the Democratic National Committee, as a member of this club, as Legislative Director for Congressman Ted Lieu, as consultant for the Joint Committee on the Arts, as a person who has worked, uh, on the Finance Advisory Committee and worked with progressive, um, uh, city council members to help uh, find ways to get funding to maintain quality of life programs, uh, in in our city. Uh, as someone who has served, uh, on the LCAP Committee and the Education Foundation Board, as somebody who has worked, uh, within our schools, uh, and on the Equity Advisory Committee to promote equity. It is, there are, it is so important to me personally to be involved. And I know I always make the joke about I'm running because I'm Jewish and I love suffering. But part of my beliefs is making, uh, i- is also to Kuna Allah. It's a better world. It's bringing people together. And so that we can make sure that those who need our help, um, get the help they need. And whether it's making sure that we are, uh, making sure that students feel safe and supported, that we have good mental health services, that our bond, uh, money is being spent to help our class, in our classrooms, making sure that we follow sustainability practices and Green New Deal, uh, it in a way so that we can try to reverse this horrible, um, you know, the horrible effects of climate change and making sure that that and LGBT issues and, uh, and and so and and ethnic studies that as approved by the state are 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 taught in our schools in a way where everyone feels safe is a part of who I am and why I'm getting involved with this. And I am proud to have the support of Vice President, CCUSD Vice President, Tristan Esador, uh, Freddie Pusa and so many others here who are members of this club. Uh, and I think that speaks to my record and the fact that I want to put students first and ask for your support for school board. Thank you.
Okay, um, there you have it. Thank you both so much for sharing your time with us, coming to speak to Culver City Democratic Club members. Um, yeah, and just answering so thoughtfully. That concludes our forum. Uh, as I said earlier, the the club is going to meet on Wednesday to discuss all of the candidates and then they'll, they'll make their vote for endorsement. There might be a runoff depending, I think each candidate has to get at least sixty percent, um, to get the endorsement. If there's a runoff, it'll be on Thursday and, um, the results will be announced on Friday at the latest. Yeah, thank you both so much. Um, and thank you to everyone who's watching. Uh, this will be uploaded to YouTube tomorrow. So you can send that around for anybody who couldn't make it. Okay, thank you.